I'll call the Parks and Land Committee together with Mrs. Keener to discuss the park facility naming rights. Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone has had this now for two weeks, so you can look it over. I have invited Mr. Salyard to come and he's going to speak about this for five minutes.
Five minutes, five minutes.
Should've had a twenty minute council committee meeting. Five minutes, and then we'll be able to ask some questions.
Five minutes.
Who's got the hook?
I don't know why she said that, like, "Prepetity, not mistrum," or something. Mr. President, members of council, thank you for the invitation. Obviously, this is laid out in front of you, so I won't read to you because you can read, but we will go through particularly the granting of naming rights, that section on how this is, how this goes. So particularly on section number three, we will get provision A. The granting of naming rights must be consistent with the city of Mount Vernon's mission and core values. We do withhold that prerogative to deny somebody if we feel like that, for whatever reason, if it's a company or individual that doesn't necessarily jive with the image that we're going with, we can say no. For all purposes, or for the purposes of this policy, all fees and naming rights will be established by the recreation board. The recreation board will meet, we will establish the fee structure pertaining to city-owned ballfields, dugouts, press boxes, and concession facilities in the city of Mount Vernon. Our requests for naming rights must be submitted in writing to the recreation board for review. We are establishing, after this policy passes, if you decide not to adopt it, then we won't do this. But we will establish an application process, and at that point, the administration will approve the application process when we move forward from there. So that's provision C. Provision D, the city of Mount Vernon will designate safety service director, safety service director, recreation director, and city council liaison to the recreation board to serve as a committee to review and make recommendations for naming rights. So once those applications are made, that three-person board will kind of review through those applications and return a recommendation to the recreation board. The recreation board will consider submissions, recommend to the committee who will bring the rec-- or, I'm sorry, I flipped that. So the recreation board will look at those applications, they will then make a recommendation to that three-person committee who will turn around and then bring it to city council for their final approval. And provisions F, the person or organization who submitted the request for naming rights will then execute a financial arrangement with the city auditor under the fee structure set forth by the recreation board. And then finally, in provision H, the physical display of the named party shall be a twenty-four by thirty, thirty-six inch aluminum sign affixed to baseball fences near home plate, and that will be high enough to not obstruct the view. And this "and" should be amended to an "or" in a visible location on press boxes and concession facilities. So that's the same size sign, should they choose to name the concession stand or the press box. And an eighteen inch by twenty-four inch aluminum sign will be affixed to a visible location on dugouts, again, not to obstruct the view. The duration of naming rights will be determined, determined by the recreation board at the same time the fees are established. We have a section for terminating, the early termination of naming rights, termination by the city, termination by the named party, or termination for non-payment. There is also a section for transferability, and before we get too far down there, that jumps from five to seven because I am the recorder and not the treasurer, so forgive maybe an amendment there. And then there is a transferability option, and if we want to consider an amendment, that maybe, Rob, I don't know if you want to look and see if you think that costs for replacements of signage will be covered by the replacement of the named party, but we could potentially, as the recreation board, build that cost into the fee structure. So essentially, whatever you're paying to name the facility that you choose, you will also pay for the sign at the first part. So Janice, if you decide to name one of the parks, and then down the road, you're like, "Oh, I'll throw Joan on it too." And you want to change the sign, you're also going to have to pay for the sign, we're not going to eat that cost. Does that make sense?
You could just go to him.
Good old Alan, don't do that. So, and then the renewability of naming rights, the naming rights may be renewed by mutual agreement between the parties.
So, before anybody else's question, I did want to ask in B of number three, do we need to list out dugouts, ballfields? Because this will not include naming of parks.
Naming of parks is a separate thing that will be a duty and right reserved by city council. So the only, the only thing that I would recommend, for the sake of moving this along, if you would like to add into this, as far as up in the purpose section, I would add the water park. Because at some point, we will pursue naming rights to the water park. Again, it will go through the same type of channels. You will ultimately have the final say on that, but the fee structure for naming the water park, of course, will be considerably higher. And of course, the recreation board would look to maintain the legacy of the Hiawatha Water Park in addition to, you know, company A presents the Hiawatha Water Park, or something like that.
Sort of like the Rose Bowl.
There you go. It would not, it would not be erasure as much as adding to, but that would be the only amendment that I could imagine. You do not have to do that, but...
So we'll start with questions with Mr. Hillier, and just go this way.
I'll be quick. Under 3B, the fees, does that have to be approved by council, Rob? Or can they just do whatever fees they want?
No, is that this policy delegates to them the, the to-do fees. If council wants to have the final word on it, we would rewrite it to allow that.
Something to think about. Terry, this all, Cooper sync with you? Thank you.
Mr. Mahan?
Thank you, sir. The, under naming rights, in the unlikely occurrence that the recreation board would come up, you know, with a company that felt that was not consistent with the city of Mount Vernon's mission and core values, and it became necessary to reject that application, but that would be a public process, right? The recreation board would go through a public process, so there wouldn't be any accusation of...
The recreation board has public meetings, and in addition to its public meetings, the first Wednesday of every month at seven o'clock, we also have a community partners meeting at six o'clock before that, so if anybody would want to air those grievances, right now.
Okay. I'm not trying to borrow trouble, just making sure it's all above board.
Mrs. Seville, any questions?
No, I don't.
Tammy?
So at its peak, what kind of revenue stream do you hope this to bring in?
So we have not finalized anything because, of course, we're waiting on your decision, but with the fee structure that we're looking at now, over the course of a ten-year period, if we're assuming that this is on a, you know, a decade time clock, with all of these things being on a, with all of these particular facilities being on that same time clock, if we sold them all, with the exception of one ballfield that is already, you know, on the clock for a naming right, that we're not going to touch, we are looking at close to a half million dollars over the course of the next decade. Of course, not at all at once, nonetheless, we've got some really generous people that want to write big checks, but yeah.
Mr. Ruckman?
I don't have any questions.
I would just suggest on the purpose, rather than now trying to add a splash pad, why don't you just make it relation to city-owned park facilities in the city of Mount Vernon? That way, it could be anything.
Well, and that, that was another thing that we wanted to kind of toe around, too, is because there are benches and pavilions and things like that that already have standing names, and I think one that immediately pops to mind is Frank Maraway over at Memorial Park. We don't, there are some legacy things that we just don't want to touch, we don't want to worry people about that. So that's why we specifically wrote it this way, but it's, it's your, it's your ballfield to say, so.
I mean, we might come back with something else, and then you got to amend it again, but if you just leave it open to park facilities, then it could be, the board could determine if they want to name a water fountain or whatever for somebody. I don't know, it's just my opinion.
Back in about eighty-seven, they named the ballfield at Phillips for Paul Slaughter. What happens to that? It just goes away?
So it, it times out after twenty years, I believe.
Okay.
So those are not, those are not permanent.
Did that already get renamed?
We've had this discussion before, is it Paul Slaughter?
It was Paul Slaughter.
Paul Slaughter, and then it was Ryan Martin.
They renamed it already.
Ryan Martin was at the, now, Paul Slaughter's name is still on there.
I'd say it's still on there.
It's still on there, but it became Ryan Martin three years ago, four years ago perhaps.
Yeah, it's, it's on the clock, and we've got, it's got a significant amount of time left. That said, you know, there are two dugouts per ballfield, there's concession booth, there's press boxes.
They named Dan Emmett something, too, didn't they? The Dan Emmett has some name on it.
The park?
The Dan Emmett ballfield, there's, because they had some plaque there.
It could be, I, I'm less familiar with that one.
Yeah, so see, there's some plaque there that they dedicated that one to.
We, so Tanner and myself looked through all the historical records, and a lot of names have timed out from the twenty-year period, I think.
All, all but one.
Oh, okay.
So, and, and, you know, this is not something that a lot of people pay attention to as far as the timeline, so I think people just assume that it's still that name.
I like the aluminum signs, because Paul Slaughter's sign was painted whiteboard, his black, in black letters his name, and it, over, over the years, it just deteriorated, so it was almost an embarrassment to have your name up there.
Right, and there is nothing stuck, so this, you know, we kind of assumed that this would be a business entity that would come in and do this, but that's not necessarily the case, anybody, like, an individual, family member, again, Janice, if you want to, but the family of Paul Slaughter could come back and, you know, rename the park, but this time, it's a fee structure as opposed to just a simple petition.
Okay, we do have a hearing.
Yeah, I am planning to take this to a third and final reading, so that rec. board will have something to work with at their next meeting. For your information. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
We're going to adjourn the Parks and Land Committee, we're going to move now to the public hearing. Mr. Hillier with planning on zoning, we'll discuss the new community authority. Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, this is referring to ordinance twenty-two-three-three-one. I have asked Mr. Godkey here to speak on behalf of this, and then I don't think there's less than two girls are sitting back or having anything to say about it, that might be about the end of it. Mr. Godkey, you know what, Jeff, you got a half hour if you want.
That's why I let Tanner just keep going.
You've got an hour left, you could add more time.
Take him off the list.
Think I'll leave half an hour, we've talked about this.
Actually, if you get through this, I'll probably have you speak on another piece of legislation, and so we don't have to have another committee meeting.
Okay. A little surprise, a little surprises.
Since your partner's at a birthday party and...
Oh, sure.
You weren't invited to McDonald's tonight.
I was not, thanks for telling everybody. So this is the third of four steps to consider and create a new community authority for the city. The first two, if you recall, were just kind of procedural, you had to introduce a petition, basically like a developer, which ended up being you guys in this case, is interested in creating one, okay, that was the first step. Step two was, you declared the develop, the petition to be sufficient to create this thing. That was easy, because the city is acting as the developer, so you just declared yourself sufficient to do this. That started the thirty-day public hearing clock, okay, we're at the end of that, so today is that required public hearing for the creation of this entity, and then it's on the agenda for a first reading. You can make that as many or few meetings as you want, that's in your purview. And then after it's passed, should it be passed, then you have to appoint your share of the board within, I think it's five days, does that sound right, five or ten days? Which you could do, you could do both at the same meeting, create thing and appoint the board members, rather than coming in five days later and having a special meeting, but that, those are the four steps that I laid out. So this third step can be one meeting, two meetings, three meetings, however many meetings you want.
You don't need to pass it tonight, then?
Nope, nope, we can, we can wait, there's nothing, there's no pressing reason to do it.
Where are we on the construction of the building?
Your building?
Close.
So you want to do that before it's done?
I didn't hear the question.
So the portion, remember, you have to submit a parcel of your own to be the first one in, and I believe you're using the garage at the cemetery, right? Which driving past it today was, looked pretty close, it's getting there, so, so, yeah, we want to have this passed before that's done.
Can we go another meeting, because there's some people we're going to have to appoint to, unless you have those people in mind already?
I have my three ready to go.
And who are you looking for for the other people?
The mayor, the safety service director, and the engineer from my appointments.
And I will say, Mr. Julius is here because he has a vested interest in this as well, so if council wants to consider handling.
Well, let's talk about the board makeup there for a second, so usually the way this works is the city appoints four, and the developer appoints three, and they serve in that ratio until, basically until the development is finished. Under our structure, the city's developer basically appoints all seven, so the mayor gets to appoint three, and the council gets to appoint four. The way these things usually work, I would suggest for your, and I'm happy to put some names up if you're interested, I would suggest you want some government folks, sounds like you've got that here. You want some people with finance experience, you want some people maybe with development experience, and pretty much every one of these that I'm familiar with has one of their local economic development folks on it. So I think one of the three of us at ADF makes a lot of sense, too. And really, their role, this board isn't going to meet often, right, maybe once a year, maybe twice a year. And functionally, their role is, one, to recommend new petitions that come in. So let's say a new development appears, they go through the same process that you just did, they start with the board, the board vets that and says, "Yeah, this petition looks good," and then it kicks up to council. So that's one thing they do. The other thing they do is basically count the money as it comes in, and then pass it over to the city auditor. So the county auditor would transfer it to the board, and then the board would then basically write a check to the city auditor. That's, that's really all they do. I would suggest that this group also serve as a project prioritization body as well. Remember, NCA's, the, the funding that is created from them, which sidebar, if you read in the legislation, it's four mills. That's blanket across any developments that add themselves in. That can always be raised, so each development could have a different amount, but it won't be less than four. They could have extra if they wanted to build extra things, or, you know, if the school says, "Oh, this is really going to put a, put a burden on the schools," then you could add some extra millage in to accommodate for school facilities, or something like that. So it's four mills, which would raise about four and a half million dollars over thirty years. That's just for Liberty Crossing, that doesn't include Rockford or any of the other developments. They would have to elect to join separately, Liberty Crossing has already said that they would do so. So we just factored them in to be conservative in our estimates. And then it'll be more as more developers show up. So four mills, which would be, if you're doing the math, carry the one, be a hundred and forty dollars per hundred thousand of appraised value. So it's reasonable amount. That was some direction that you gave to us, that you didn't want to make it too, too onerous on the, the new property owners, but wanted it to be robust enough to pay for, for new facilities.
I can answer Mr. Hillier's question. According to Mr. Hinkle, we will probably want to have this whole thing wrapped up by the end of August. We expect sometime...
So we don't have to do it tonight?
Yeah, we expect sometime in September is when the facility will be completed.
You do, yeah, next time. So the other thing, the other role that I would suggest the board has is to serve as a liaison, essentially, to you all and to, and to the city administration, sounds like they'll all be there anyway, to help them prioritize these projects that would fall under the purview of the new community authority. What else, what other questions do you have?
This is step three out of four.
Yep.
And the last step would approve the board, is that one of the pieces?
Yeah, that's the fourth step, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know why we couldn't move this piece through.
I'm going to take the lease to next week, because we have to name people for this board yet.
Yeah, and you have to do it within a certain amount of time.
I think you said five days after the, after we pass it.
I think it makes sense to wait till next, have those people in place, I believe you can do it at the same time.
Do you ask those people prior to, so that obviously they agree?
One of the seven, by the way, has to be a citizen with no affiliation to the developer, which in this case is you guys. So you want to find somebody that has some finance or development understanding that's not affiliated with you all. Just to be...
Living outside the city limits.
That's a, that's something that you would apply, that's not in the law, but that's your, your policy, right?
Typically, not all cases are typically.
Yeah, yeah.
Bruce, you got this all absorbed, no questions?
Yeah, I think you ought to do it at the same meeting, so they don't have to have a special meeting within the five days, so that only makes sense to me, postpone this to our next meeting, and then have those things ready.
I'll give it the first reading.
Yeah.
You had mentioned you could help us out with filling some of these slots.
Sure.
Council comfortable with that, unless you have somebody you want to put in it, and you could, I'm thinking, if you have ideas to email us, who you'd like for those?
Yep, yep, I can send you kind of a slate, if you like.
If council has any thoughts or changes to that, we can maybe do it by email for the next meeting?
Would you mind providing maybe two in each of those sections that you talked about, like finance have two people that would fit the bill and stuff?
So just logistically, again, Bruce, are you thinking that we do the first reading tonight, possibly pass it on the next one, but then pass the fourth one that same night, or we have to...
Yes.
Yeah.
Because you have to within five days, otherwise it's not a special meeting.
Makes sense, yeah.
And you'd have, Rob, you'd have legislation drawn up accordingly, right?
If you tell me the names, I'll tell, I'll have the legislation ready.
Put it in that email.
Yep, yep.
Questions on, if we, I'm just thinking out loud, if we have two people suggested for each slot, will draw this out further than we need to?
I just think it provides council with options, so that council still has a say in who those are.
So housing guard draft legislation, if you're done there in advance, who are the people?
I would recommend that...
And the other problem being is if he gives you two names for each slot, are you going to, to...
Oh, yeah, you can't build, yeah.
Talk about it online, that would be a potential problem for open meeting laws, so.
I'm happy to coordinate with one of you, I don't know if that's personnel, or you, Mike, or whoever's committee it falls in, I'm happy to coordinate choosing those four and submitting that.
Well, the committee chair could, could select them, we could always amend it. And we could always amend the legislation here.
So then we're down to, you're going to email me?
Yep, and Rob.
And Rob, of course, and I'm not going to email anybody else, we'll have it written into legislation and discuss it that night.
And then, yeah, and then have some other names in case we need to amend.
I mean, if anybody wants to suggest a name to Mr. Hillier, you can do that, and then he'll tell me who he wants me to include in the legislation, and we can go from there.
Yep.
Jeff, what's the term limit on, I mean, how long's the term on these positions?
Ooh, that's a good question. I'd have to look that one up.
So there is a limit?
Well, every...
I'd have to look that one up. I'm guessing there is.
Yeah, so then also, with the government positions, are they, you're naming the position and not a person in this case, right?
Well, the mayor can appoint his three, and so you're naming a person in that case.
And Mary, you, Mr. Zick, and who's the other one?
Brian Ball.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'd like to know if there's stagnated terms, so everybody can go off at the same time. You know, so it's like to know what the terms are.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Can we design that, and could we do our own bylaws by chance that would kind of outline those operating...
I'd have to check the code to see if it prescribes it specifically, otherwise, I believe you could. If it doesn't say specifically, you could.
It was an obvious thing.
Three forty-nine, point out here.
Keep talking, I'm taking notes.
Question, a follow-up question on that, those positions. So you named the safety service director, the city engineer, and the mayor, but named three individual people. So clarify that for me, so if, let's just say, Brian is, no longer is the city engineer at some point, would he then fall off this board automatically, or...
No, the, the mayor can replace his choices at any time.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so if, if Brian chooses to leave city employment and wouldn't be available, they could name someone else. Brian could leave city employment, and the mayor might choose to keep him, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is a little different, because then a lot of the appointments that you make, because it's not a recommendation from the mayor and then to you, the mayor just gets to appoint three, serving as the developer. And then you get to appoint four, serving as the city government, it just so happens that they're a little bit mixed in this case. So you, there's no, like, you don't appoint, he doesn't recommend you appoint in this case.
And just for the record, this is for new construction, only not people that are already being taxed in the city of Mount Vernon.
Correct, new construction.
Like that loud and clear, built-in vote.
It's new development, it, not an individual house could join, but a whole development has to join.
Correct.
The point there was not, we're not taxing, that people are already being taxed.
And the developer has to ask to be part of it.
Let me dig into that a little deeper, not that I think anybody would, but could a current development ask to be included?
I suppose...
If it wasn't completed.
Right, but I don't know why they would unless it wasn't completed.
Oh, okay.
Because the theory is you would get access to the funds that are raised for new development stuff. It couldn't be, Mel's neighborhood couldn't be like, "We need our roads paved, so we're going to join this thing and charge ourselves extra." It purposely avoided the stormwater pond in that, if anyone's paying attention. So you couldn't do that, but...
But the Schleba development, which is started but not completed, could choose to join.
Yeah. In which case, it would be like the phase two part of the development or something.
And when do the finances start kicking in, when they sell the first unit, or whatever we are looking at? I mean, in this case, when we... I mean, in this case, when we finish this building.
The charge starts. Let me see if I'm confusing my CRA and NCA. Hmm, I'd have to look that one up exactly when it starts, doesn't start right away.
But like, so Rockford Homes broke ground?
It's a percentage of the project, I thought we knew.
I think it's ninety percent of the buildings done, it gets out of the taxes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a percentage of the project when it's, you know. So, yeah, Rockford could still ask to join, even though they've broken ground already.
Um, Terry, do you have anything to add to this? Do you have questions or anything?
I was saying, um, the background meetings, uh, very clearly what Jeff's describing, how it works, how.
Just for the record, is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this? Cheryl, Tony, you two girls?
Those two girls left, I, he keeps, he keeps losing his ideas, he starts talking, they leave, then they come back and they leave again.
As soon as he started talking.
I don't know what that says, Jeff.
All right, so everybody has this clear, so basically, this piece of legislation will get its first reading tonight.
Sounds like a teacher.
It'll get the, uh, third reading at the next meeting, along with the new piece of legislation we hope to have together, naming the board. And you want it passed the next meeting as well, just so we don't have to have a special meeting.
Yep, and you can stay ahead of finishing the construction at that, at that.
So, um, I was wondering what, um, Tony's interest in this also was.
Go ahead.
Come on up, Tony.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll just speak here, I've been a resident of the city for thirty-six years. I think it's important to kinda keep an eye on new development. And, uh, having taken track of, you know, some of the comments made by council, and I just think that it may be an important possession, I'd like to be part of that. Very simple.
Well, thank you for coming in.
You've noted that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Questions, comments, any, I wanna speak further on, uh, this piece of legislation while we're in a hearing. All right, so here's what I asked we do. At seven oh eight, like to close this, but um, so I'd like to close this public hearing, and then I've asked Jeff, um, I talked to Mr. Filkins, um, he called me and he has a four-year-old birthday party at McDonald's today.
Oh, I'm glad they're still doing this.
Family meal.
Get the orange drink and everything?
Family meal in, uh, Playhouse, it's McDonald's.
Still taste that stuff.
So, but there's a piece of legislation on here that I'm sure you're very aware of, I can't put my finger on it. Has to do with the municipal planning and the three oh three North, Norton Street.
Mm-hmm.
So, while we have some time, and Jeff likes to talk about stuff, we have about eight minutes. Um, we wouldn't have to have a committee meeting on this, um, the next meeting, if we can hear what this is all about, you know all about it?
I know enough about it.
There you go, you got eight minutes.
It's on tonight, right?
First reading will be tonight.
First reading tonight, okay, I thought it was far in our head.
You need this?
How many units is it?
Four?
Eight.
Yeah, I think it's two four-unit buildings, right?
I'm not sure.
Two, yeah, two four-unit buildings.
Okay, so eight units total is what we're talking about, so.
I'm sorry, this is resolution twenty, twenty-three sixty-one, thank you, sorry.
You just want like a quick summary of the project?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, if you can visualize on the north side of, um, Heartland Park, Norton Street runs through it, so Burgess Street runs on the north, and then Norton, uh, that continues on, it kinda ends up as a, in a, the Y off of Sandusky Street. The first two properties, so that would be on the left as you're heading north, the land bank owns, they're both long and skinny. One has a house, one is a vacant lot. Try as we might to do our normal land bank thing and sell that house, we couldn't do it. Um, so it's gonna come down soon, so the question then became, what happens to that lot in the meantime? Ran through several, or not in the meantime, what do we do with that lot in perpetuity? Uh, ran through several scenarios for that, from, you know, just overflow, green space, community garden, um, new building for some social service entities, okay, none of that kinda shook out. And off in the background, we've been working on the area agency on aging, um, to find a property where they could build some senior assisted affordable housing. Uh, they have done a couple of projects like this, working with land banks in Richland County and Ashland County, much bigger projects, uh, but same idea, so it is, um, we mentioned four, uh, uh, two four-unit buildings that will be built on, on those two lots, um, for income targeted seniors, it will be affordable, modest rent. All of the properties will be built according to accessibility standards, and the residents will receive services on site, so they'll, they'll have access to, you know, meals on wheels and home health aids and, and et cetera. Uh, whatever the, the area on, agency on aging provides. So, this is a good, you know, creative reuse of a property that we were kind of like, well, what's, what do we do with it? Um, the neighbors had, uh, we've talked to a couple of them, they've supported it. It's an opportunity for some senior housing, which we need, uh, and the residents can receive services on site, they can age in place. Um, it'll be modern-looking, attractive, high-quality, uh, product, uh, that we don't really have, uh, any of currently. Eight is a start, but there's certainly a lot more, hopefully we'll be bringing you some more of these things. Um, your role here is the zoning change, or we done it that already?
We're just, um.
This is approval of the.
Approve, yeah.
Plan.
The municipal plan.
Got it, so you've already approved the zoning change from whatever it was to planned commercial development district, which allows residential, which is the same zoning that the rest of the Heartland property has. And so now you've got in front of you the development plan.
Trying to list it as a comprehensive plan, I'll.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been the municipal planning, they've approved it, then it goes through us, and it'll be done.
Yep. Yep, yep, haven't heard any, any negative thing about it, and everybody's been completely in support of it all the way through, from zoning to development to municipal planning.
I don't think anybody spoke against it as, uh, municipal planning.
Yeah.
Um.
That's probably true.
Which, I guess this is a Rob question. I don't think I have that page, yeah. This piece of legislation and le- legislation similar to it, does it have to be passed as an emergency legislation?
No.
The question was brought up to me, um, about anything to do with zoning or municipal planning or, and I'm not talking about this particular piece, but um, when something is declared as an emergency, it takes effect as soon as the mayor signs it, correct?
Assuming it gets the requisite number of votes.
Correct, council passes it, mayor signs it, it takes effect. The question I had, uh, asked me was, by being emergency legislation, um, if community, if a community member, um, would have issue with that, wanna do something about that, there's no stopping at that point, if they had the thirty days where it doesn't have emergency, uh, it gives the community something to work with, especially something that I wanna read.
Um, what's the question, I'm not sure what question.
Why do we have to have to declare an emergency on every piece of legislation?
We don't have it on every piece of legislation, if you don't want me to include it, or whoever drafts it, just tell us you don't want an emergency clause on it.
So I think going forward, if they need to do a zoning or anything like this, unless it has to be an emergency, I wouldn't wanna, I don't wanna see it on there.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Uh, clarification on the rent, sir, uh, you said, explain the rent would be subsidized, is that what I heard you say? Or controlled, or explain to us how?
Controlled, yeah, yeah, so the r- the rates, the, the rents, I believe, will be locked in for the duration of the tenant.
The duration of the tenant?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and so that, when you have a rent control situation, that doesn't allow for, that could lead to a situation where the ownership couldn't do the proper maintenance.
Who's the owner?
The owner is AAA five, is the area agency on aging, they're the owners.
Okay.
So it's a four-rent situation. So.
So they, so they would, essentially they're agreeing to maintain the, the property whether or not the rent is paying for the maintenance?
Correct, and because of how they're funded, that, that's a government entity, right?
Okay.
So they've got access to different funding sources that allow them to do this kind of thing that a tr- traditional private developer wouldn't.
Okay.
So we're not sticking a, a, a private company with a fixed rent? This is a government agency that is ba- effectively subsidizing the rent?
Right, right, thank you.
All right, so I'm, I'm fine, I'm sorry.
Sorry, you can consider the rent stabilization as one of the services that are also provided by this entity.
Makes sense.
So hopefully that'll help get this passed at the next meeting. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
I never hoped for something done.
Okay, we're adjourned, we're recessed down from seven thirty P M, we begin the legislative course of the meeting.
elsewhere else that's notorious for the last full week of July in Knox County.
The weatherman said, uh, last Saturday there wouldn't be any rain this week until next Saturday. He lied.
I don't think you need to watch weather report when you know it's fair week. So it is fair week. My team's very busy doing mobiles festivities are continuing. Obviously first Fridays, et cetera. So my environmental health team, it is definitely the busy season for our food inspectors. They take a lot of pride in what they do, which we're definitely aware of that, but it's tiring for them. So if you do see them, please extend them a thank you. Sometimes it's a very thankless job. Regards to a facility update, two, two West Vine Street, the former Strang Glass Building, um, modern builders did win that bid. They rewarded that at the end of, it would have been what, a couple of weeks ago, the board of health meeting, we are waiting for state permits. As soon as we can get state permits, demo, that property will occur. And we still have high hopes, we're working at this high hopes, uh, to be in and operational by the end of the calendar year. I know that there are obviously some supply chain issues that continue. One of them has to do with our HVAC system. So we are looking at potential alternates. And interior doors of all things are still twenty weeks behind. So we'll continue to navigate those, but it is underway. So it's waiting for Department of Commerce blessing and we can start. So I'm looking forward to that project absolutely very much so.
Question I get Zach is what percentage of the health department will be there with some stay at your current location and, and what percentage is coming downtown?
So the current outfit of one one six six zero Upper Gilchrist Road will remain intact as is. There will be no one in addition going down there. Uh, we are taking two oh six South Mulberry Street currently next to the Ogle's practice there. So we're taking that four thousand square feet and we're gonna move it into the, uh, West Vine Street location. We are adding additional treatment rooms along with additional behavioral health, uh, individual mental health and substance abuse disorder counseling rooms within that four thousand square feet. So that'll be highly beneficial for us. So that's kind of phase one. The phase two is the build out on that property that would then take services on the Upper Gilchrist location and, and bring them downtown. Ultimately, my five year goal is to have everyone downtown short of East Side on, on Danville. So the goal is to get everybody downtown. Uh, that needs a lot more time and a heck of a lot more money. So.
So for a period of time, you'll have Danville and Upper Gilchrist and, and down here.
That's great.
Downtown.
Yep. So we'll have to phase.
That's the question I get. Just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yes, sir. That's it. That's it. So the behavioral health with your stats, um, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention this evening. We are currently on sixty individuals are on our waitlist. So we are actively pursuing additional behavioral health counselors, uh, in particular L I S W, uh, L I S Ws along with, uh, substance abuse disorder background. So to bring them into more of the downtown area, it's evident having access and functional needs, creating less barriers for those individuals to make, make access downtown. So that's why we went ahead and had the additional treatment rooms put in. Finding professionals of that nature is, and it's no different than anything else. It is extremely difficult, but we are actively pursuing that. Waste water. So, uh, my epidemiologist is working with Sherry Baer. Is that right? Baer?
Yeah, Baer.
Uh, the superintendent for the new superintendent outstanding. Looking forward to that collaboration. We're gonna start doing influenza testing in wastewater starting this fall with Department of Health. Uh, so we can actually get a better feel what that dashboard's gonna look like. As, uh, some of you may have remembered in two thousand twenty-two influenza season, typically you start seeing in the fall. And it spikes typically after Christmas time. Everything spiked before Christmas last year. So our trends in epidemiological response, quite frankly, ever since the pandemic, influenza is unknown. So that's why it's critical that we get ahead of this and start to get a better understanding of what that picture will become as our new epidemiological response will change and we have to accept that. So it's a start. Uh, looking at the city of Houston in Texas, they are, have done outstanding work with wastewater surveillance. They will have us a hundred percent behind. So we're taking that model and we're running with it at a local level and having partnerships with Mount Vernon is huge. So we're gonna continue to move forward with them. And hopefully become, you know, a leader in that regard. How cool to be to just do measles surveillance every two months, you know, throw tests out there. Do we have anything we need to be aware of, uh, before it blows up in our face? So that's kind of the end outcome goal, but we gotta put the pieces of the puzzle in play. Lyme disease. We have fifty-eight confirmed or suspecting cases. That is eighteen above where we were last year this time. Well, some could say that, well, it's early detection. We're understanding more, you know, providers of testing. I just want to continue to bring that forward. The black legged deer ticks continue to be predominant in our communities. And that's not gonna change. So we need to be very aware of education with Lyme disease and the fact that we do have the ability to combat it as long as it's detected in an early manner.
Can you go to the health department and get a test for that if you think you may have it?
So we have primary care. So none of them are than any other primary care provider that can look potentially where may you may have been bitten or just your symptoms based off of, you know, what you're experiencing. A lot of people that get Lyme have never, that they were even attached to a tick. So although you'll get the red bullseye that, uh, rash at times, that's not always the case. So it can be a variety of things. That's why it's important that we continue to educate our providers that yes, it's year round. Here's your, your seasons. You definitely need to watch for it. Um, the answer is yes, you can, but I don't want it to sell short that that's the only place you can go. You can do your primary cares with. And Knox Public Health is doing Knox County Fair. We're, we're, uh, designated the day on Friday. So we'll be giving out handouts and recommending hand sanitizer before joining the lovely food stands. So that was, uh, my biggest updates for today. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Zach?
Not so much a question. Um, my wife did think about your crew today at the fair. This is her second year. She didn't have to be there.
Yeah.
Um, very hot. Um, I don't know how we could talk about the health department if you don't talk about one of your big retirees, Pam Palm.
Yeah.
Um, she was always there. Pam was one that worked those late hours a lot of times with my wife. And I talked to Pam just the, uh, other day and it's like, you know, a lot of, a lot of jobs that Pam created that job. I mean, she made that job what it was. And I says, they're not gonna find somebody that worked at it like you did. But that's a big gap you got.
Absolutely. And thanks for recognizing that. Yeah. I'm not sure if that was a kudos to Pam.
No, that was, uh, that was when you, when I saw you, I immediately thought of Pam and what she's gone through here as a lady and as well as, um, her retirement. So well deserved.
Yes, I couldn't agree more.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. First person speaking on matters of public concern is Tanya Kent. She wants to speak on the dike and levee. Uh, Tanya, please come to podiums and state your name and address. And, uh, limit your comments to four minutes. If you need additional floor, please, you can ask council for that.
Hi. My name is Tanya Kent and I live in, on two oh two Maplewood Avenue in Mount Vernon here. And this evening I would like to discuss public safety and environmental safety. That the residents on the west end have apparently been, it's been going on for years. We've met with Mayor Starr, as you know, um, on the twelfth and many other city officials. Um, it was brought to my attention that the like, the dike and or levee was declassified in twenty sixteen. Um, this means that when FEMA looks at the flood plain there, it, it does not exist at all. Um, this, this was due to, um, the lack of maintenance and general upkeep. So, um, the s- sl- county water and soil also pointed out the flood plain was reevaluated in two thousand nine and suggestions were made to the area, to the areas of the dike on the west end to, for it to be raised one to two feet. Um, it was not done and that needed to be done for it to be secure. Without pro- proper maintenance, the flood plan has expanded exponentially over the decade in the west end. Not only has our flood insurance increased significantly, but we also have concerns that FEMA would not exist our residents, assist our residents in a catastrophic flooding event. Um, even if the, as FEMA doesn't see that it exists. Um, I have questions. Um, who were we in contact with? Who, who, who were we in a maintenance contract with? Um, the levee was supposed to be covered on fifteen feet of both sides of the dike and that has not been done. Um, did it expire? Was there a reason that this has not been done? Um, who is responsible back in two thousand nine through ta- two thousand sixteen to rectify the concerns given by FEMA? Um, has the entire dike throughout the county been declassified? I talked to the county commissioners. They were unaware of this. I went to the Clinton township. They were unaware of this. And I asked them if Columbus Road has been maintained and they said it has not. And I said, has it been declassified? And they could not answer that question for me. Um, we have incredible opportunities for economic growth over the next decade and millions of dollars have been invested in future projects. But what is it worth when our entire neighborhood and overall city is in jeopardy due to the fact of our infrastructure is not secure? So these are very important questions for me and, um, I live on the west end. My family lives on the west end. I have lots of friends in Newburgh. So can any of you answer any of these questions for me? Or were any of you aware of this?
I'll speak up. I was not aware of it. I was not, me, but I have heard about it since. Um, I assume, and I see Brian Ball just came up the stairs, our engineer. I assume you guys are putting together something after that meeting and are planning on addressing this?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're planning on addressing this certainly. Um, can't speak to what was going on in two thousand nine to two thousand and sixteen or even, even up to
Before your administration.
Before our, our administration. So certainly as I, as I've told the members of the west end, it's the west end and is, this is a priority for me, this neighborhood. Um, uh, and that, uh, the levee is incredibly important to our flood control plan, um, for the county as well as the probably about one half of the population of the city. And so that's a, that's a, that's an important life safety thing. And, and, uh, now that we've been able to start putting some money to it because we have a stormwater utility, uh, we can do some maintenance that, uh, we have been doing. It's just, it's, it's too little. We have stormwater things that we have to take care of all over and all the neighborhoods. So, and that's only one, that's only one, uh, source of the funds. But just for clarification, I, I understand it's decertified, not declassified is the correct term, just to make sure we're. But still, it's not, it's not good. It's not good. Um, anyway, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do on the, on the, the levee. And, um, what we want to do is do some kind of, at least to start a survey on the, the west end. When the leaves come down, we can, we don't have to cut limbs down to be able to survey the area. So we can at least take a look at heights and, uh, but, but you, you are right. I think we need to look and see is that, since it's been decertified, do we spend a lot of money trying to do a full fledged flood plain study? Or do we start over and redesign altogether? And that's, that's something we've worked.
I know that you had mentioned in the fall, excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Um, that they were gonna do a preliminary flood plain. How would that be feasible if it's decertified? How would that be?
Well, what we can do is take a look at elevations. That could help. That may help. I'm not promising that may help with, uh, the, uh, the need for flood insurance, uh, which by the way is probably two or three mortgage payments a year.
At least.
At least, yeah. Anyway, um, so obviously we, we, uh, we're, it is a priority for, for a lot of different reasons, but, uh, it's just been a long time coming. And, uh, we need to get this back on, I think we can get this back on the, on the priority list on, like, life safety projects.
So is there any current maintenance being done down there?
Yes, there is. We've been, uh, we, we were able to, uh, contract. How many, we did, uh, a section, Brian, if I made him.
Well, so the current moles particle levee, in the last year, we started a phased brush removal, starting basically at the, uh, uh, west side and working around and, uh, to get the brush outs.
And we're, and we're really, we're really making a concerted effort to remove the invasive species, the, the autumn olive and the honeysuckle, which is really, really bad. And, uh, hopefully replace that with more natural, um, replacement native, uh, grasses that would be, uh, certainly indigenous, indigenous. Pawpaw is one of them. Like, there's, there are a couple of others that I think, um, that, uh, would help keep the, the invasive species down. We know we've got to continue to take eradicate the invasive species, but, um, yeah, that's, that's among, that's among one of many different measures that we could, we have to take. It's just, it's a much, it's, I'm not gonna candy coat it for anybody. We've let it go for so long and now we've got a lot of work to do.
Well, can I ask if it's, is it reasonable to say if in two thousand nine they suggested we raise it one to two feet, that we probably need to raise it even more than that?
Probably.
Okay.
So the flood plain elevation that exists today is based on work that was done in nineteen seventy-five through DOS computer in Huntington, West Virginia. That model has never, ever been run. It's only ever been run one time to come up with the flood elevations for the west end or town.
The data is always changing. Uh, when the, 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 the two-year storm and the three-year storm and the five-year storm is, is always, is, is always changing. So we're trying to get more current data on that. That's, that's a whole other analytical part to this, but we've got, we've got a, a levy that we need to.
Those forty-eight years of rain data is included in the calculation.
So.
Yeah.
But this fall, we are moving forward with some surveying of the area to start to move towards solution.
I got this government work this morning for the preliminary. We're gonna survey the bridges first because those are the things that make the most effect on the flood plain. So that scope came in and we gave it to Terry tomorrow and we're gonna win that contract.
So we are actively working on this project?
Yes. Yes, we are. I met with the mayor. We, we talked about, we had allocated ARPA money to do drainage work in Memorial Park that we're not ready to do. We talked about moving that ARPA money toward the flood plain study. Um, because we'd be, we would hire one consultant to survey and we are another consultant to do, um, running the model scenarios.
We first talked about the ARPA money. We talked about doing something about them paying flood insurance out there. Where are we with that?
We're, right, as you, as Brian, we talked about, we have not been able to do the flood plain study yet. We are looking at this fall, starting the things, working on that where, uh, like I said, we've got some ARPA funds coming. We probably will have, um, we had some already identified, but we wanna move.
We wanna kind of double it up.
Yeah.
Cause it, I can't remember the numbers. I feel like we had like thirty-five thousand for the survey and then we had forty-five thousand for drainage in Memorial Park. I think we feel that the west end is more important and we have a, Memorial Park work isn't advanced far enough to spend the money in the timeframe that we have to spend.
So to Ms. Kent's, uh, question, was there a maintenance contract ever? I mean, did it expire? Did we have one currently?
When you say a maintenance contract.
Then it said it, we were, we were to maintain the land of the deep east side.
That is federal regulations. That's not a contract.
So we elected federal regulations?
Yes. Now those trees are old growth walnuts. And we say we, likely the people that neglect them are no longer alive. I, some of those trees are two foot diameter. They're growing out of this dike, so.
And if we do have an event, that root bolt goes, that's gonna fail.
I, I mean, I can appreciate the fact you can say back then whoever that was, yes, that failed, but since, it sounds like since two thousand sixteen, we haven't done anything either.
We started a stormwater utility with a specific task to work on this structure. So we have worked for three straight years creating a stormwater utility. We, you know, that is not, I would say is fully insured, but a specific line is rivers and channels in the stormwater utility. So we're, you know, we're, it's, the process is not, if, if we take all the trees out, we'll have to re-vegetate the entire outside. And we'll also destabilize the dike by taking the large trees out. So at this point, it's safer not to take the trees out.
I just know the calls and concerns I've gotten, one from her specifically, you know, they're now living down there wondering what, what happens. Right. And you've answered the question, what's next, where, what we're starting. But in the meantime, it's, it's scary for them down there and I get that.
Well, if it's responsible since two thousand sixteen, the flood plain down there's expanded exponentially, like I said. So that means, and we've had extra cost on flood, um, insurance, we've probably paid a hundred of thousands of dollars more because FEMA is the one that regulates that. And they see that there's no dike or levee. Who's responsible for all that?
All right. Well, thank you, Tanya. Please.
I'd like to add a couple more things if I could please, sir.
Okay, you have.
Neglecting to also maintain the dike also harbor, harbors perfect conditions for illegal activity, pollution, biohazard waste and chemicals affecting the river and surrounding areas. What is the solution? Last year I did speak to the contractor who was partially clearing the dike. He mentioned that he could clear the area further and level the grounds so it could be mowed. Unfortunately, that never took, took place. And now it's regrown entirely and people are congregating down there again. We need to have this addressed before we do the new flood plain assessment, I would think. In closing, my entire family lives on the west end. I would like to make sure that our residents are safe in their homes for generations to come. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my concerns and acting hopefully in good faith and take appropriate action to secure the dike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person wanting to speak on, um, vacate utilities and the west end and so forth, that's Don Lang. Please come and give your name and address and then you can comment to four minutes. We gave Tanya some more time because we were talking, uh, but if you need more than four minutes, you can ask for another four minutes when that time expires. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Lang, three oh five Fountain Street. And, uh, I do wanna say Fountain Street because I understand you're gonna take the fountain out down Riverside Park. And that's why the street's named Fountain. I don't like that. But anyways, I'm here to ask and I'm certainly glad that Mr. Ball is here. I, I'm asked that with the, what they call Maplewood Alley vacated. It's, I, the dike is sixteen feet from my bedroom window. Now, if you're gonna take fifteen feet, that dike's gonna be one foot from my bedroom window, which I own that property because the dike's sitting on my property. But that, they don't seem to understand that. Mr. Ball told me when I asked him, he would own my property. He would buy it off, uh, pay, or he would buy it. Uh, and that upset me. But I got two maps here. I got one that shows the alley. I got one that doesn't show the alley. And when I asked about closing it, I got a paper that I brought, I brought to the mayor's office, to service director's office, to a couple of council people. Nobody could help me fill it out. They didn't understand it either. And I thought, you know, you made this paper up. Somebody did. Can't somebody? And they said, Mr. Ball can. So he evidently knew before I called him on the phone that I was gonna call him. And I said, I'm calling you about how to fill this paper out. He said, don't bother. You'll be wasting your time and money because you're not getting that. And I didn't think that was very nice. I'm glad he's here because the mayor, I, I brought this up at a meeting Wednesday and the mayor says, well, he's not here to defend himself. Well, he is now. And, uh, well, he, and, and I got nasty with him when I come up here after the phone conversation. Not nasty. I just asked him if he was a hydraulic engineer. And he said, yes. Which way's the river run? He said, north. Well, the river can run anyway. And he got mad and asked me, or said, uh, don't assault my intelligence when his office is shut to the door. But what I'd like to know is if I can get this, I've maintained it for forty-four years and, and he did. When I told him that, he goes, well, thank you. I didn't appreciate that comment either. And forty-four years I've lived in there. I've owned two houses. And he's telling me, yeah, within the next twenty years, we're gonna build that dike up and we're gonna put it on. And I said, listen, you give me that alley, you can build that dike up. I'll put it in writing with an attorney. You can have that fifteen feet. I don't have a problem with that. No, absolutely not. I'll own your property. Well, I'm gonna tell you, he'll have a tough time owning my property that I've maintained for forty-four years. I've lived there for over forty-four years. But I mow that lot or that alley, the so-called alley that don't exist, never has. I was born and raised in the west end of town, sixty-eight years ago, Friday. And there's never been an alley exists there. Now, the last administration, I believe, was Mavis and, uh,
Mr. Glass?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Glass, they come down, they, they closed part of Fountain Street for me. They closed one alley beside my house for me. And all I asked was for this to be vacated and I can't even get anyone to help me fill out the paper. My attorney didn't even understand the paper, the form to fill out. But I would certainly like somebody to help me with this and get more than answers than what this man can give me. The second thing I've got is my wife has COPD. She's seventy years old in September. I'm retired, been retired. I'm sixty-eight years old. All I get done is chasing homeless. I can show you picture after picture after picture of all of the camps and needles. I, I just showed Officer Young and Mr. Hillier, a whole bunch of needles.
Mr. Lang, your four minutes is up. Do you like to ask for another four minutes?
Yes, please.
Counsel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
And I, I gathered this bag of needles and stuff and took them to the fire department and, and they, I don't know what they done with them. The needles I'd blooded them. There was also drugs in them. There was a crack pipe there. There was a band-aid, uh, so you could shoot up, you know. Uh, but I, I, you know, I'm sixty-eight. The last thing I need to do is run that dike every day, four or five times a day, running people out. I want peace. I want, I want to just live, you know, I don't have many years left. I'd like to enjoy it. So I bought this side beside it so me and my wife could get up and down the dike or go around the west end. I've got a hundred and forty pound Great Dane that has trouble with heat. He rides in the back of it. My wife's got COPD. This makes it much easier for me to go around and watch things. And I'm also part of the neighborhood watch group. Then I, and so I get this paper and I doubt if I can read it because I don't have my glasses on, but, uh,
Don't forget where you go.
It, uh, and I asked about this at the meeting Wednesday and I got four different answers about it. But it says on any street or highway except for emergency, well, wait, let me get it. All, uh, vehicles commonly known as all-terrain vehicles, all-season vehicles, many bikes and trail bikes, all-purpose bikes does not include, does not include utility vehicles, which is what I have. As defined in Ohio Revised Code, the vehicle registration number, blah, blah, blah. And anyways, it says, uh, now this is the way, way I was told, this is the city. On any street, highway except for emergency travel, but that does not include the utility vehicle. You go back here and it says, on a street or highway having an established speed limit not greater than thirty-five miles an hour. Now, I've had several officers and others tell me that means you can't, you can't, if, if it goes over thirty-five miles an hour, you can't drive it on the street. That's not what this says. It says, upon the street or highway having an established speed limit not greater than thirty-five miles an hour. And, uh, so I, I went up, it's, it's got everything, lights. It's as safe as any golf cart, safer. I went up and got the title changed over my name. And when I did, they had several categories for all these different vehicles. Mine falls under the same category as a golf cart. Golf carts are legal on the streets. Utility vehicles are not, what I understand. So I went to get my tag and they said, you can't get a tag until you get inspected by the sheriff's department. I said, well, does the police department do that too? And they said, uh, well, let me look it up. And they looked and said, yeah. So I called the police department. I'm waiting on them to come to inspect it. I will put a tag on it, but what I need, I, I would like permission to drive that on the streets. I'm not hurting a thing. I do not leave the west end. Me and my wife ride around, and she enjoys it. You know, it's hard for her to walk in heat. She's got COPD. And we've had a blast. We've been in a couple of months and, and it's fun. I, I've even, a lot of the neighbors down there, elderly neighbors, I've given them rides home. And, uh, and they've always, a lot of them's asked me to take them for a ride. And, you know, everybody's getting fun out of it and I'm not hurting a thing. And then, uh, I had a problem with a guy. He lives up in the north end. He complained about it. So that same day that he complained, he told me to get my butt off the street as he went around me. And he, he complained and later that evening, me and my wife was on Gamber Street and an officer pulls up and said, Don, you can't ride that on the street. I said, well, he said, I got a complaint. I said, you gotta be kidding. Nope. So I started, I come up to the city hall. I asked.
Mr. Lang, but your time, please, uh, conclude what, what, what you're trying to say.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that I've went everywhere. I've done everything and I would like to be able to drive that on the streets like it's, just like a golf cart.
Okay.
Can you help me with that? I certainly would appreciate it. And I'd also appreciate something about this alley too. Uh, I did, you know, I did, you know, the answers I've gotten, I said, this man right here was uncalled for it.
Glasses. Well, thank you.
Yes, I will.
Okay. That concludes the matters of public concern. We're now going to the resolutions. We have, are there any additions or corrections?
I don't know. She's holding her hand up.
Part.
Mr. Ball, is it here? One of the questions I had was, the whole dike throughout the county has been certified, not only the West End. Does he know what the whole thing is, can he certify or does that part, or do you know parts?
Yeah, the whole thing's be certified. If Clinton Township part that used in the West End, all of it is being certified.
Okay. Counsel, on your packet, were the resolutions and ordinance for this evening, are there any additions or corrections to the legislative portion? If not, I'll assume it's approved by consensus, and I'll ask Mr. Hill to read these by title and number only this evening. We'll start with resolutions. We have one resolution for third reading. It's Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Fifty-eight. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Fifty-eight, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Twenty Twenty-three Knox County Tax Incentive Review Council concerning parcels of commercial real property in the city of Mount Vernon and receiving tax exemptions for purposes of economic development and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-three Fifty-eight, please.
Second.
It moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier?
Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Scott spoke to us about this at the last meeting. Terry, did you come up to add to this or getting ready for the next one?
No. I I just was here at the end.
Okay.
Additional questions?
Do you have questions for Mr. Scott on this? I think he pretty well explained it the last time. You did a good job last time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We now move to Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty, a resolution adopting a park facilities naming rights policy for the city of Mount Vernon.
Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to take Resolution Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty to its third and final reading.
Second.
It moved in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension.
Like I said in our committee meeting, I'm moving this so that the rec board can start to have something to work with. We can still bring this back if we do find, pick up, and need to change some things. Mr. Boren, are you able to change the verbiage inside of the policy, the and to or specifically?
Yeah, that's a scrivener's error, and we can do that.
Okay. And then numerically, there was that numerical issue of seven to six.
Yeah. We're only in discussion now on the suspension of the rules, so.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty.
Second.
It moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Keener?
Now, I guess I should ask you about changing those two little things. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Any other discussion?
I do have a question. I I support this. When Mr. Sawyer was up there, though, he was saying that, you know, this should be changed. The numbers were wrong, and we had, then there was, if this doesn't work, maybe we should, you could put that in. Is this going to be further discussed then at your meeting to see if your committee agrees with all this then, or?
The only thing that we needed changed was the and to or in.
Seven to six.
H of number three, and then the seven to six, because he numbered it wrong. So those are called.
Scrivener's errors.
Yeah, so other than that, it is staying as it is.
I thought he said something also, Ms. Keener, about the splash pad under the purpose, which then I suggested just all park facilities. I'm not trying to muddy the water here, but.
No, he was leaving splash pad out of the purpose intentionally so that when there are memorials and things like that, like specifically the benches and that type of item, we're not touching the memorial items. Those are separate.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-one. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-one, a resolution approving the PCDD Comprehensive Development Plan as submitted by the Knox County Land Reutilization Corporation and approved by the Mount Vernon Municipal Planning Commission for three oh one and three oh three Norton Street, parcels number sixty-six dash zero five three two nine point zero zero and number six six dash zero two three three five point zero 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 respectively, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
I'd like to give this a first reading, please.
This resolution receives its first reading. Next resolution is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-two. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-two to its third and final reading.
Second.
It moved in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Siebel?
I would like adoption of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-two.
Second.
It moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. Looks like we're going to be talking about one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mrs. Siebel, counsel. Yes, you're correct there. The first items come by way of the Distribution and Collection Department. They had sold some equipment off of gun deals and got some pretty good proceeds out of that, and now they would like to put that back into equipment of them. So fifty-fifty split, this is a department, it's a fifty-fifty split, so you see your dollar amounts there, eight hundred and forty-four and eight hundred and forty-four. Item three, though, is coming to us, again, resources coming into the treasury that are not anticipated at the beginning of the year. A hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and one dollars is coming to us by Ohio Department of Transportation. This is in connection with our state Route Thirteen Lightning Program project that we've got going. They reimbursed us back for contract engineering that the city had already paid. So and I'll just let you know, coming at your next meeting, in conjunction with this same project, we just received another fifty thousand dollars as well.
Wonderful.
So we'll have that for you at your next meeting as well.
So Terry, we didn't expect this hundred and seventy-three thousand, or we didn't expect it this year?
We did not expect it initially because what we believed to have thought the terms and conditions were going to be is is that we only had to pay our share portion of it, ten or twenty-five, about twenty percent on that, and that the state was going to pay the contractor. Now, this is design work, yes, this is a design work. So what really happened, though, is is that we ended up paying everything. So now we're getting our ninety or eighty percent back from what we should have been allotted to. So, yes, and that the fifty coming back in as well, that's going to be a part of the same thing. Yeah, all with the design part of Route Thirteen Lightning Program.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The next resolution is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-three. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-three to its third and final reading.
Second.
It moved in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Siebel?
I would like adoption of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-three.
Second.
It moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. Now, we're going to pay off three thousand. We've got a computer for four thousand five hundred, and then we got, what, sixty-seven thousand two hundred? Boy, we've got a lot of work here, Terry.
Yes, we do. So on your item one, counsel, this is in the street department, so we had an employee who has left employment with the city, and Mr. Hanko initially, of course, you don't always think that people are beginning to leave the city at some point in time, as we're putting appropriations together, but we do have, and this individual has moved on for three thousand dollars. The item two, counsel, has to do with a, and I will help you finesse your way through here as I see this, the account number that we're talking about from the first one, two one eight seventeen hundred five four four five four four five one. The title was actually Clerk Computer Maintenance, and we're going to transfer forty-five hundred dollars over into the computer personnel within the same fund, an amount of forty-five hundred dollars. That's coming by way of the clerk of courts at the municipal court. Items three and four all has to do with district number three, and so we've got some engineering costs that we want to allocate of the seventy-two hundred towards improvements of Route Thirteen. Again, we're still on that Route Thirteen, and then debt service for sixty thousand that we need to get allocated before year end as well. Thank you, Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you, Terry.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-four. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to section five seven zero five point four one D, then announce certification.
Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-four to its third and final reading.
Second.
It moved in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. I would like adoption of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Dash Sixty-four.
Second.
It moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. And now we got then and now.
Yes, we do have. We have four items on this one. First one, Browning Ferris Industries. This was on our spring clean program that we had at the beginning of May, so we, again, timely on that. Item number two for county commissioners, this is the first part of the IT contract. As you realize and maybe not, counsel, that we interacted or we entertained a contract with the county IT department, with them doing IT work for us now. Ben's doing a great job on that, but what we've got here is for seventy-five thousand, and that's a fifty percent of the contract, was not set up timely in order for that to not meet the then and now regulations. Item three is a company I was not quite familiar with, but now I have kind of learned that they are now our sludge people that are doing our sludge removal. And again, that thirty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars was not timely set up in the department. We just had a training session this morning in regards to this whole thing that we just are talking about right here. So I think we're going to get ourselves back into sync. We've got people in newer places working in different jobs, and so we spent a whole afternoon doing a training session and all about this series of what we're talking about. And then item four left over is for eleven thousand eight twenty legal services for the fire department. Thank you, Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Question, a couple of them. That Browning Ferris, is that Republic, the transfer station? Is that the new name for that? So that's what that was, is what our part of paying for?
Our share, yeah.
Um, and then the Signag Road, number three?
Yeah.
That's a contracted service, right? Did we not go out to contract on that?
Well, the contract is correct. It's just the timing of the purchase order.
So you said you've worked with all, these are like four different departments. So you said you've, uh, worked with all, these are like four different departments, we've worked with them on correctness?
We have, yes, we have.
Thank you, I mean, uh, go ahead, never mind.
Any other questions, council? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, next resolution is resolution number twenty twenty-three day sixty-five, Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to pay bills from twenty twenty-two, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you, I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five to its third and final reading.
Second. And moved in second for suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule is suspended, Mrs. Seville.
I would like adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five.
Second. And moved in second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion, Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Uh, this is from twenty twenty-two, if I, if I had thirty-six thousand dollars I was wanting, I think I'd have been on you before this.
One would think.
Yes.
Yeah, so, but what we were talking about here, council, in this particular aspect, is, is it's a bill from twenty twenty-two, but the purchase order is being used, utilized by the twenty twenty-three appropriations, which, of course, does require council's approval for, for us to be able to make the payment to, to the contractor, so. Contractor is aware and understand, knows what we're doing, so, uh, once we get approval from you folks, then we'll make sell with on Friday.
When's it too late to pay a bill from your prior?
You know, it depends upon what, what the circumstances are, sometimes invoices don't always get where they need to be, that seems to be a problem from time to time. And there's other points, it's, it's just a matter of, you know, sometimes we know that we're waiting on a bill, and we can't get one sometimes. And it, it, it's kind of a difficult situation sometimes, but for the most part, uh, we do actively try to keep a buzz on what's going on with our purchase orders and make sure that we get our things paid timely, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, the final resolution for this evening is resolution number twenty twenty-three day sixty-six. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio, to enter into contract with the GPD Group and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, uh, I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six to its third and final reading.
Seconded.
And moved in second for suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule is suspended, Mr. Severance.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six.
Seconded.
And moved in second for the adoption of this resolution, any discussion, Mr. Severance.
Yes, Mr. Ball is here to talk to us about this, uh, upper Gilcrest and US Rock thirty-six improvements. Great, we've, uh, briefly touched on this, I believe, a little bit in the budgeting cycle, and then as we've gone through several of the meetings related to the, in, the subdivisions and, uh, improvements that are happening on this end of town. Uh, if you go way back, Colonial Woods, we'd originally tried to partner with them on road improvements once they started their phase two. They're never going to start their phase two, so if you've driven the road recently, it's, uh, township road with ditches, there's no walking, um, traffic signal, we did some temporary repairs too, but we get a lot of complaints about the, uh, traffic signal, so. The project is Upper Gilcrest Road at Coshockton Avenue to the northern city limits for design of reconstructing that road with modern city drainage, a bike trail on the east side, possibly a sidewalk on the west side, so that we're connecting our new citizens to a walkable, um, you know, area kind of in our master planning effort, people wanna live where they can walk places. Rockford is committed to building a bike trail and on their section of property and, and helping with the project. They're also doing some of the, they'll be doing some of the utility work that'll be required, uh, for this. The other part we wanna include is, um, it won't be like final design, but we need to seriously look at Coshockton Road as it leaves town, and this commercial area is for sale, we're getting a lot of the frontage of where Rockford's working, we're getting a lot of interest. What we don't wanna do is have the commercial district be built, and then go back and tear the road out and completely redo it like the other three phases of Coshockton Avenue we're done, so. Our goal is to be proactive, study this area, at least define the right-of-way needs, and perhaps change those boundaries so that when it's time to make this an improved multi-lane road, we're not having to buy businesses and interrupt their, uh, their operations. Also looking at the utility extensions to the, uh, east end of town as those areas, uh, develop. Right now, it would be very difficult to provide sewer to that commercial area, because it's all, uh, pump stations that are nearly maxed out, that weren't built for this, uh, planning, so that's what we'd like to work on, questions?
If I could.
Yeah.
Just for the public record, the commercial area you speak of is across from hospice, that twelve acres roughly?
Yes.
That's, I think it's well defined now that they've been moving dirt elsewhere, it's still green.
Yes, this, the part is still green.
So, so the public knows where we're talking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when you talk to the city boundaries, that includes Slayball's property then?
Yes.
This will include them?
This would include a connection to them, yes.
Uh, with the develop, with the improvement on Gilcrest, that improvement will go down to the Slayball property?
Yeah, and to the north side of these.
Okay, and I assume this will all be paid out of that Tiff money?
That's correct.
Important to know, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, we now move to ordinances, we have two ordinances, the first one is for third reading, that's ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, an ordinance accepting the annexation of one hundred and five point sixty-five acres, parcel numbers fifty-nine point zero dash fifty-nine dash zero zero, I'm sorry, start over, fifty-nine dash zero two two eight nine point zero zero zero, and fifty-nine dash zero two two eight nine point zero zero one, from Pleasant Township into the City of Mount Vernon, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three twenty-nine, please.
Second.
And moved in second for the adoption this, of this ordinance, any discussion, Mr. Hillier.
Uh, Mr. Hill, thank you for doing that, I think that's the first time I've heard you here on reading all those numbers. Um, council, if you remember this, goes back to the debacle of annexing the Little House, so we can annex a hundred and five acres. I think you know how I stand on how I'm gonna vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
No.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
By a vote of six to one, this ordinance is adopted. The final ordinance for this evening is ordinance number twenty twenty-three day thirty-one, Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, an ordinance determining that the establishment of the Mount Vernon New Community Authority will be conducive to the public safety, convenience, and welfare, and is intended to result in the development of a new community and declaring the new community authority to be organized in a body politic and corporate, and defining the boundary of the new community district, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President, council would like to give ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-one its first reading with, uh, with the passage of the next meeting, thank you.
This ordinance receives its first reading, and that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting, we now move to remarks, administration, Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and council, uh, I just would like to welcome one of my newest contractors, Mr. John Highfield, to the team that year is going to be helping out, so that gives us a free contractor to help us tell our story to the rest of the world. That is all, sir.
Mr. Zick.
Um, yeah, all I wanted to do, I, I know we had a chance to address Ms. Ken's concerns tonight, I wanted to speak to Mr. Lang's concerns. Um, I know when it came to all-terrain vehicles, the UTVs, um, there was some discussion at our community meeting. Um, we just wanna make sure everybody's going through the right process, uh, of getting them registered per councils, ordinance of a number of years ago, um, and also inspected, so I will check with the police chief tomorrow, see where we're at on getting the inspection done for you and any other neighbor in the neighborhood. Um, when it comes to the, um, area of land next to the levee, which is, uh, flat as an alley, um, I know there's been a conversation going on for a few months here. Um, one of the reasons that Mr. Ball, um, is very reluctant to recommend to either municipal plan or council to vacate that area is because it does serve as, uh, both an access to the dike, but also an area for us to expand the dike, so. Um, you know, I, I think in some ways, Mr. Ball is accurate, that it would not be in the city's best interest to vacate that piece of land given eventual, so that's just a fair having.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Anything further, Mr. President?
Mr. Boren.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Um, first of all, thank you for the people that came and spoke, uh, including the health department, thank you, always happy to hear from you. Uh, and I will pass those statistics on to my wife, she's always happy to see those. Um, I read the letter, um, concerning our stormwater retention in, uh, Mel's neighborhood, and, uh, that you're sending to those neighbors. Um, and I also see where Laurel Woods is gonna be getting the letter as well. Um, I, I talked to Mel prior to the meeting, I, I didn't know if this was a place where, um, we'd wanna do something similar to what she did in the West End, where we meet with these neighbors and kinda lay out, Mel said he had talked to somebody up here who may wanna talk more about it, but I think the more we inform the public what we're trying to do, why we're trying to do it, what's happened in the past, the better off we'll be. Um, and I'm sure when Laurel Woods receives their letter, I don't know how many of them have been following what's been going on with, uh, longitude driving that, so I'm sure that'll get interesting as well, we'll probably expect to see calls from that as well. Um, at least we're getting it right, at least we're getting them involved, and if anything we can do to help these residents lay out a plan that's in writing that everybody has to follow and to make sure it's on their deeds, did you ever find it on your deed?
Mr. Boren, explain to me that it talks about other, basically other pieces that, that are included in this, yes?
So my, one of my biggest concerns is with houses selling every day, that how would that next person know that they have to pay into this? So I don't know how that can be done, but, um, that is a concern, thank you.
Mr. Severance.
Uh, nothing further, good tonight, thanks.
Mr. Mayhem.
Nothing from me tonight, thank you, sir.
Mr. Ruckman.
Thank you for everybody who came out from the second ward to talk, really appreciate you guys being here, and, um, I also, anybody who has, uh, not been out to the fair yet, I would encourage you to come out, so, and, uh, especially on Thursday, we're gonna be selling all the junior fair, uh, market projects for the kids throughout the county, and we would love to see you there.
Mrs. Keener.
Uh, thank you to those who came out and spoke, a lot of times I think council takes what you guys talk about up here, and that is what we work on on Tuesday. Um, I did wanna encourage everybody to get out to the fair, and also on Friday, July twenty-eighth, there is another series of the Front Porch Concert Series on High Street, and that runs from six to nine P.M. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir, Mary, I want to thank you for the letters about the month, too, that goes a long way of communication, thank you, cut, cut down on the calls, thank you. Um, I do wanna talk a little bit to both of you, thank you for coming and speaking this evening, I know that's difficult, and I know we didn't get everybody's questions answered, but, uh, thank you for bringing it to our attention. I do get a little frustrated, though, when I hear, you know, especially when a citizen comes in and needs help with a form, or questions answered, and that doesn't happen, especially when that's the whole reason we're here. So if some assistance could, could go to this gentleman to help him in the direction he needs to go, I, that's the whole reason we're here, I'll leave it at that. Um, on a lighter note, I've been getting some calls about the dog fountain not being on.
It's getting painted, the dogs are getting painted, and also that is, uh, MVNU property, so I always just direct them back to. I think the city even posted something on our Facebook page to talk about them getting painted, so.
Some folks brought some grandchildren down, and we're very disappointed, so I will let them know, thank you, that's all.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Rick, for responding to them and that you're going to get back with them, that made me very happy, because I felt so helpless listening to their problems, and I wanted to help them, and I don't, didn't know how I could do that, and it made me feel good that you're going to take care of them, so, thank you.
Thank you. And we did have that request, if anybody from city council wants, wants to help that young lady out with her broiler, broiler chickens, let me know, and, uh, John said there's a way we can even do a money into a, a pot, if we wanna do that, if not, uh, we'll just move on. Uh, appreciate everyone's comments tonight, and enjoy the fair, that being, uh, thank you, uh, for being here this evening, and congratulations on your promotion, Cheryl.
Cheryl's moved?
Yes, she's taken over Grant's position on, on the, uh.
Did you say putting her back to work full-time?
I, I.
Be full-time.
Oh, well, congratulations, Cheryl.
That being said, I call for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose me? We are adjourned.
And look at the time, look at the time.
I know.